Okay, stand by. And five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee this evening, Monday, December 23rd. Call to order, this meeting is being recorded for LCTV, being aired live and being livestreamed at longmeadow.org. If we can begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. And this evening, I'm happy to introduce students from Center School and their principal, Ms. Hutton, who will be presenting to us about their Peace Builders program. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you and good evening. I'm going to have our Center School friends come forward. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Peace Builders and I'm going to turn it over to the students. A critical part of our work as educators is to bolster the emotional competency of our growing students. And we strive to create a positive school climate by developing a positive relationship between students and staff. As a community, we've always embraced the importance of social and emotional learning with our responsive classroom approach. And Peace Builders serves as an extension of responsive classroom. Peace Builders is a school-wide program with a set of values, a common language, and Peace Builders truly is a way of life. Over time, our vision is that the language, actions, and methods for solving problems become second nature for our students. The program gives students the tools to slow down, which they need terribly in this environment we live in, and think when facing conflicts, teaches them to foster empathy, show kindness, and emphasizes the idea of shared responsibility for the group's wellbeing. Self-awareness, self-control, relationship skills, responsible decision-making are all part of each Peace Builders practices. So I'm very proud to turn it over now to Mrs. Quinn and her 5th grade students, and they're going to tell you a little bit more about the Peace Builders practices.
Good evening. I'm Dani Quinn, and I am proud to be a 5th grade teacher at Center School. And I'm here to represent not only Center School but the kids in my class who utilize the Peace Builders program throughout the day. It's an integral part of our problem-solving and the growth that we have in the classroom. It's helping them to be good citizens, good classmates, and strong individuals. And each of the students has come up with an example for you on how they utilize the Peace Builders program in our classroom. So let me start with Foster.
Praise people. We praise other people for the good deeds that they do in the class. Praise board. We have a praise board in the class which shows what the good deeds that people do. And then other people write what they liked about it and put it on a sticky note. And at the end of the week, the students get to take them home. And I have one to them. And at the end of the week, we do our weekly reflections on what we were proud of about our Peace Builders and what we want, we improved during the week and what we want to improve.
Um, next is giving up put downs. In our lives, we make a lot of mistakes and say, and we have some bad ideas. When people laugh or tell you that was dumb, it will make you feel bad. So we should just give up put downs. A put down, as you know, makes you feel bad. An example is when you get a bad grade on a test and someone laughs and makes fun of you. That's a put down. At Center, we are trying to make people feel good, not bad. If we can make kids feel better, they will be happy, nice, and try harder. But when you hear a put down, we feel sad, mad, and angry. I try and use everyone's ideas where everyone wants to help. If I can give up put downs, you can too.
Seek wise people. Here at Center, part of our Peace Builder program is to seek wise people. In 5th grade, like last week, we did a project where we found a wise person in our life and we interviewed them with questions. What I learned from my 4th grade teacher last year is that it's always good to make sure you're being honest to yourself and others. We also praise the people we notice at school, like our teachers and friends who are wise.
Next is noticing hurts. Peace Builders notice hurts in many ways. If we see someone who looks like they're sad, mad, or angry, we ask what's wrong. If we caused the hurt, we try to right that wrong. Recently, me and my friend Evelyn had a big problem. I saw a wise person, my teacher, Mrs. Quinn, and she helped us get through with it. Once she finished talking with us, Evelyn understood what hurt she had caused and she tried to right it. We hugged and got over it. That's what noticing hurts is all about.
And next is righting wrongs. A lot of times, people can make mistakes with other people and we know that we did, but we don't feel like admitting it. But we should admit it. So we have notes in our class that we can write, we write what we did and how we can fix it. One, for example, one day we had a really, really, really bad lunch. So we all had to write down the notes. We all had to write notes to one of the lunch monitors or someone else we had to say sorry to. They're a way of showing that we all make mistakes and we should put it behind us.
Last is help others. Center School helps others in many ways. For example, helping hands. We make sandwiches for the people without homes. They're hungry, so we help them. All the 5th grade, 5th graders have kindergarten buddies. We help them with projects and they love it. During the holiday season, like right now, everyone buys something for a child without any friends or family. We put the presents in a basket and then we send it, we send it to the shelter that they live in.
The students would like to do the pledge for you now that we recite every morning. So you can stand over here. Come on, right up here. Yeah, okay. So they can see you. Okay, ready?
I am a Peace Builder. I pledge to praise people, give up put downs, seek wise people, to notice and speak up about hurts I have caused, to right wrongs, to help others. I will build peace at home, at school, and in my community each day. Go Peace Builders!
Well, we are so proud of our 5th graders. This Peace Builders unit, I know that Mrs. Hutton's been talking a great deal about what a great impact it's making on students, but I'm so impressed with the leadership of our 5th graders. This is a new program and you've learned so much. It's only November and you've shared it with us tonight in a very clear, articulate fashion. I'm impressed with how articulate you are. You weren't nervous at all coming before the school committee and the cameras. We're very, very proud of our Center 5th graders. And Mrs. Quinn, thank you very much for bringing them in.
You're very welcome. I did want them to introduce themselves because they did such a beautiful job.
Come on up to the microphone. The microphone's not for us here, but it's so that everybody at home can hear who you are.
I'm Olivia Glazer.
I'm Phoebe Sorrow.
I'm Grace Meierhedge.
I'm Sierra Geiger.
I'm Dani Shay.
I'm Foster Creep.
Thank you for allowing us to come tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for them? Yeah, we'd love, they'd love to answer them.
Um, I've got a question. How is it working out at lunch, since you guys have a bigger lunch?
Well, from now on, well, now there are separate tables for boys and girls and it's being a lot quieter. And the lunch monitor, monitors, whenever they put up the Peace Builder sign or they tell us to quiet down, we're getting quieter.
Lunch is going a lot better for the 5th grade and the kindergarten. I don't really know about the other grades because I do not eat lunch with them.
I'm pleased to hear that.
So you all talked about the different thing, the different parts of the pledge that you take, but what, what's your favorite part of it? What's your favorite thing that you've learned?
Uh, my favorite part is being praised and praising people. Getting praise notes really makes you feel happy and wants you to be better so you can get more. And giving praise notes feels as good as getting them.
Yeah, kind of like Sierra said, it's just remarkable how it feels and how like you, how it feels to give them praise notes and they give you praise notes. It makes you feel really good.
How do you make sure everyone gets a praise note? Does everyone get a praise note?
Well, usually everyone does a couple good things throughout the week, so people are able to notice it and they just write them a praise note. And sometimes you don't even realize you do something good. So when you get it, it makes you feel extra special.
Alright, so I've got a question that's the opposite of Michael's, which is, what's the hardest part of the pledge that you find to do?
I think the righting wrongs and kind of like speaking up about what we did. It kind of feels embarrassing and like, I think, I'm a jerk, but we get over it, hopefully.
That is very mature. Yes. It's very difficult to admit that you made a mistake, but realizing that we all make mistakes kind of makes it a little bit easier, doesn't it? Do you have anything? Well, thank you very much. And I'm sure you have a lot to teach adults as well as children.
I learned a few things.
I bet.
We should all be Peace Builders.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much for sharing with us.
Alright, have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Alright. Correspondence for this evening out there?
There is correspondence for this meeting. Emailed, emails expressing interest in serving on the superintendent search committee from the following individuals. Kristin Newmark, dated October 30th, Stephanie Jasmine, dated November 5th, Laura Mulderig, dated November 5th, Melissa Zibolski, dated November 6th, Scott Brodsky, dated November 6th, Matt Tomzing, dated November 6th, Chris Papadopoulos, dated November 6th, and Elizabeth Tarian, dated November 6th. An emailed message from Ms. Molly Schwartzoff of Ran Associates, dated November 3rd, regarding the superintendent search and mailing to MAS C and M A S S. An emailed letter from Ms. Kathleen Rosoto, dated November 12th, regarding Park MCAS and the newly proposed MCAS 2 Hybrid. An email noted from Ms. Molly Schwartzoff of Ran Associates, dated November 13th, regarding their weekly update. And an emailed letter from Ms. Melissa Zibolski, Zibolski, dated November 14th, regarding the superintendent search. I guess we should note that some of these were on a Friday before, so we don't, they don't make our, we don't make our, they didn't make our meeting for November, what was it, the 8th that we had?
Right, because correspondence must be received prior to noon, the Wednesday before our meeting, to be presented at that meeting. Do we have any visitor comments this evening? Alright, any school committee comments?
I have one, just one, just one. Tomorrow night, 7 o'clock in the auditorium, is the, is one of our wonderful concerts in our music series. But I want to invite the community to come because tomorrow night, we're going to be dedicating the auditorium to Michael Musi, which the committee voted on maybe about a year ago. It's going to be a really special night and I think, you know, if you're able to make it, the music's obviously always fantastic, but it's going to be a really great night to honor someone who really, you know, put their life's work into making our music program the award-winning program that it really is, so.
Alright, Liz?
Um, I want to say I went to the senior class play and it was excellent. And the senior who played the lion, he had that voice down pat. It was amazing. They all did a great job.
Do you have anything?
Well, I was at Blueberry today for a STEAM museum that the kids seem to really be enjoying. And I thought it was pretty nice that the PTO funded that. I heard nonstop from the kids how excited they were about the robots that were brought in. It was a neat little event for the kids at the school today.
Michelle, anything?
Nope.
Russ?
No.
And just I'll add a congratulations to all of our sports teams who went to various stages in either region, regional states or state semis and, you know, did us proud. So to all of our fantastic sports teams here at LHS.
Especially volleyball, field hockey, and soccer for Western Mass titles, which is fantastic.
Yes. I can't keep track of all who got titles. That's why I didn't want to start mentioning them, but.
I got one more comment if that's okay.
I knew you couldn't do just one.
Yeah, well, I really hope that our, I really want to wish our football team luck on Thursday. I think East Long Meadow has, is going to lose.
Well, alright then, Michael. Not that there's any animosity there.
It's the rivalry.
I know. Alrighty, so going back to old business, Ms. Hutton was not feeling well last time we met to do her presentation on MCAS from Center School, so we welcome her back this evening. So I will turn it over to you. And it's not that we're all leaving, we just want you all to see the screen. Is this 12?
15.
It's not showing up on mine. Oh, there it is. I got it. Make this a little bit larger. I just want to say before I start the MCAS 2 that Laura Giugio did a really beautiful video for you on Peace Builders. I'm going to send it to you. Just in the interest of time, I didn't want to play it. I wanted you to focus on the students, but I will make sure that you receive that. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to present as my colleagues did at the elementary level. And I'm going to start with my 3rd grade. And you can see the results. We had 92% of our students were proficient or advanced in ELA in 3rd grade. For math, there was 94% of our students were proficient or advanced. I know you've seen all this data, so I'm just going to do a summary of it. You can see the CPI for ELA was 97.1 and for math, also 97.1. Then we followed our cohort, our 3rd grade cohort into 4th grade. For 2015, the CPI was 94.7 and they, 84% were proficient or advanced. In math, CPI was 97.8 and 92% were proficient or advanced for this cohort. Our cohort from 3rd, following them from 3rd to 4th to 5th, if you remember last year, this was a cohort we were concerned about because of their math performance. So we did focus during the wind block on their math. And you can see the growth here. They went from 15 to 31% advanced. They had a CPI of 91.8 in ELA, so that was really nice growth and we were happy to see that in ELA. And then the math too, they took a leap from 10% advanced to 30% proficient, was 38. The needs improvement, that was a very large number last year of needs improvement, 47%. It went to 25%. So we're pleased with that cohort's performance in 5th grade, CPI 85.2. If you look at all of our students for the CPI, 2014 was 89.4 in ELA. They advanced to 94.3. High needs was 72 and we improved to 82.6. Non-high needs, 94.9, went up to 97.4. This is something I'm very proud of. We talked about it at our staff meeting today. And because we are trying to close that proficiency gap, our students with disability, the CPI was 69.9, it went to 80.4. And that was part of our school improvement goals as well. In math, you can see the growth in the CPI for all of our students, 86.1 to 92.9. High needs, nice growth there, 61.3 to 73.5. Non-high needs, 93.9 to 97.6. And again, the students with disabilities in math, 58.3 to 74.1. So we, we did a nice job beginning to close that gap. Another one of our school improvement goals was to make sure to try to improve the student growth for all of our students, to get them into that average band. In math, we took a leap from 37 student growth to 54, so that was a plus 17. And then ELA was 55.5 to 49. You can see the trends. We stay right within that 40 to 60 band. We'd like that to be higher, but we still met our target in ELA. The median student growth for high needs, math went from 37 to 54 and ELA, 49 to 58. When you look at the proficient or higher 2000, which is something that we're striving for again, part of our stu, our school improvement goals, all of our students, 70% to 83% proficient or higher. High needs, 36 to 44. Non-high needs, 80 to 93%. Students with disability, 31 to 46. So again, some, some nice growth there. ELA, 74 to 83. High needs, 38 to 47. Non-high needs, 85% to 92%, and students with disability, 33% to 46%. These are the areas we, I want to, I want to focus on for our growth too. We decreased the percentage of students in the warning and failing in math. All of our students in math, we had 8.6% last year and it dropped to 3.5. Of course, we want that even lower, but our students with disability, this was an impressive decrease, 35.9 to 17.9. And we decreased the percentage of students warning and failing in ELA. We went from 2.9% to 1.7. And for our students with disabilities, 10.3 to 7.1. So again, in the spirit of the MCAS and standardized testing, we're beginning to make some movement. Nice trend of improvement for, for all our students, so. Our science, we were flat. I don't know if you talked about that with, with my colleagues, but you know, we, we didn't make any gains, but we didn't lose. You know, it was 80, our CPI was 84.4 in 2015 and last year it was 84.8. So we do, as you know, we're focusing on the science curriculum this year and, and doing a curriculum study. So we're hoping to see some improvement in that area as well. Do you have any questions for me?
I'm ready.
You're ready. You said you weren't talking much tonight.
I'm not going to. So, you know, we're, I mean, these are incredibly impressive. And so congratulations to you and, you know, the entire staff.
To my staff. They worked, they worked really hard.
And so I guess my, my question is, you know, well first, we're, you know, I feel really great that we're finally starting to see some of those high needs and students with disabilities moving and really.
uh, some of those high needs and, uh, you know, students with disabilities moving in, in really a strong direction, the right direction. Um, I think we've seen a lot of stagnancy, not just in, at Center necessarily, but district-wide over the last couple of years, which, so this is really, you know, such a great, you know, great numbers. What do you attribute it to?
Um, I attribute it as... No, she left or was here. I wanted her to come up. She was one of our special ed teachers, first and foremost, our special ed staff. Um, we're at a place where we haven't been ever at Center School. They're very talented staff, they're very data-driven. Um, and they're just doing a fabulous job and their collaboration with the regular ed teachers is impressive. Um, so that's one piece of it. Another thing, I believe the wind block has been very successful. I think it's been very student-focused, again, data-driven and making sure that all the students are getting what they need. We also have a staff, um, who have a lot of specialized instruction. So, while it's data-driven, they're also able to give the students exactly what they need in terms of very specialized instruction. So, I think that's another piece of it. Um, and the students, the special ed students are getting that double dose. I wish they could get the triple dose. I wish we could give them more time on some, on some of the subjects that they need, but they really are not missing the tier-one instruction. You know, they leave for the most part, they leave during the wind block, so they still are able to get the advantage of, of the instruction from the classroom teacher. It did not happen before. You know, their services was in lieu of the tier-one instruction. So, I think that's made a huge difference.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome.
And I know that one thing, um, that we had discussed last week, or last meeting, um, we referenced your math teacher or math specialist from the, the year prior with the advances that they were making. And we were commenting, um, that to have the collaboration between your staff and the other school staffs, you all have, um, I, I know at least between the other two, you know, there were strengths at one that might be a weakness at another and utilizing the time and, and our own teachers' talents, um, to share that with their colleagues, not only within their building, which it seems like you're doing a great job, but between buildings as well, um, you know, so that we can see that more of a, um, you know, a district-wide, not, not that any of the schools did poorly. They, they all were wonderful, but, um, you know, to share the ideas of what's working, what you've tried, what, what hasn't worked is, um, obviously making a difference.
Yeah, I think we can all learn from each other with what everyone's doing while at their particular schools.
And Russ, did you?
Um, well, last meeting, we kind of talked about if there are areas of weakness that, I mean, funnel through the superintendent, obviously, but whatever those areas are, if there is things that the committee can look at as part of our budget process, that would be helpful to know because obviously when we look for more money from the town, if we have a rationale for the request, that's always helpful, so. I know there are different, I mean, you have a lot of strengths, obviously, but there's always something we can improve on. And so, those are the types of things that when we go through the budget, it's really helpful to know that. I'm sure you all work on that anyway, but we talked about that last time.
Yeah, well, I think we're very appreciative of that, the extra special education teacher that, that we were able to get and I think that's made a huge difference. So, I would just request that we can maintain the staffing as we have it now because it's, it's proving lots of success for us. And again, that what we need more than anything is time. And it's like trying to get creative to find the time to, to give the teachers a time to do the kind of planning they need and the, the collaboration and the sharing and we're trying to get creative about that, um, but it, it, I think that's the biggest challenge right now. It's trying to figure out how to get them together and do what they need to do because there's a lot on their plates. I think you've heard that over and over again, but it's, it's very, very true.
Can I just mention with the, with the cohorts we received that some correspondence from somebody in the public about how we look at the data? I did look into that a little bit and it looks like, um, we probably need to relook at that as far as how we're creating the information. That's not for tonight, but obviously it's, it's something that I think we should address at some point.
Well, you'd be up Susan to do those five-year trends, so that answers the question of looking at one cohort over a period of five years.
So, we have the trends that I want to bring to add, but team first, so it's all we're going to look at.
Yeah, I don't want to, what I was, I think I said this last meeting too, but what I really want is just the MCAS data, not the cohorts, but actually five years' worth of data for all the grades and we'll just like start with that. Because comparing cohorts doesn't really work. Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Dawn, I, I am highly impressed with the Apple Ticket Center. I know you've put a lot of heart and soul into making this happen. Thank you for your leadership and again, thank you to your staff for an outstanding job.
Yeah, thank you.
And obviously Peace Builders is a success.
It, it is. I mean, it's really, um, we're seeing it make a difference, you know? I, I mean, we're, we're looking at different ways to survey and to gather data to see what differences Peace Builders is making. I can tell you my office referrals are down, um, from last year. I'm tracking that. And then mid-year, the teachers will receive a survey and they'll fill that out and that'll be some more data collection. And, um, then they have some other ways for us to gather information to make sure that we're moving forward in a positive direction with it. But the kids are starting to appropriate a lot of the language and do, handing each other's praise cards, which is really wonderful.
Right. It, it's neat to see them taking such pride and ownership in it and, and how they can already articulate, you know, you didn't even know you did something good and you get a praise card for it and it makes it even more special. It's, it's nice that they're recognizing the positive because so often we get bogged down in the negative.
Right. And I just have to thank my staff again too because they're completely a hundred percent on board with it and our PTO for funding it. Was it through their generosity that we were able to bring it to Center School? So, that peace pact that's... You can see that, that's what the teachers received. And that is filled with each, each tab has one of the Peace Builders practices and it gives the teachers a variety of lessons that they can use for implementation of the program. And the teams work together to decide each month which of the lessons are going to do with the students.
Fabulous, fabulous. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are we going to be doing something like that at the other schools if it's successful?
The principals are talking about it, the sharing. Um, Wolf Swamp's been working on a program. They, they have similar tenants, it's just how they're implementing them. So, it has been discussed. Dawn has been sharing with the principals the success of Peacemakers at Center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
The other bit of old business is the superintendent's search update, bless you. We did receive a final report, the application deadline for anyone interested in applying for the superintendent position was November eighteenth and we did receive an updated report on Friday that stated that we had forty-seven applicants, um, who did apply and that Ray and Associates is now working to, um, sort through those, look at what we as a school committee and a community emphasized is important and then, um, finding candidates that match those qualities so that they can bring forth ten to twelve candidates for the search committee to start reviewing on December second. We have been notified that Dr. Rush, who has been working with us, um, from the very beginning, has, is in the midst of having some medical issues. So, we, we do wish him well and Ryan Ray, who was on the conference call with us last time, will be taking over as our primary consultant. So, he will be here on December the second. And Russ, I did request via email, um, an update dated report of your request of, you know, the breakdown of number within Massachusetts, number, um, who have been, all the numbers that we have been getting prior, I had requested that and have still not had a response, so. That is where our most recent update on superintendent searches. Were there any other questions? Yes, Russ?
Well, I'm, so I still have that same concern about the number from Massachusetts. And I did see the correspondence in the packet, but it's not so much, I, I don't lay blame anywhere really. I'm not sure what exactly happened. I just think the advertisements in-state, I think we just didn't do as well as we could have. We may still have enough applicants once they tell us, I guess we'll find out, but I do think that could have been better. I don't think that's blame on one side or the other. I think it was just probably communication at some point, uh, miscommunication maybe. But, um, I do still have that concern. I know that I'm probably in the minority on that issue, so I'm going to let it go, but. Reiterating it anyway.
I, I think the fact that, you know, we chose a, a nationwide search company, um, you and I have spoken before, it means that they don't focus their attentions in our state or just in the northeast, um, that they actively recruit, you know, nationwide. The fact that we did advertising via US Mail, via print, via emails, via online, um, you know, we, we've reached out every way that we can. I don't want the community to feel that we, we did not advertise appropriately or, or with enough time. I would like again to thank Tom and Sue for their work with getting advertising done through MASC and MASSS, which both, um, you know, because we did not go or, um, choose MASC as our, our search agency, the fact that they, um, are advertising for us and the associates of MASSS, uh, again, are in conjunction with MASC. So, the fact that they put out emails to, um, all of their contacts as well, I, I don't think... I don't know, I, I just, out of, we, we have forty-seven qualified applicants, um, you know, to, whether they're from Massachusetts or not, I, I can't say at this point because we don't have that data, but I, I don't want the community to be alarmed that, you know, we, we missed any avenue of, of advertising. Um, Sue, I know you had said, sorry, I'm putting you on the spot. I know you had said when, when we were talking about getting emails and all out, that when you are at different meetings, that you, the response that you got was that word is out or word was out, that we are hiring. Could you elaborate a little bit?
So, I was at a Title One conference for the district a couple of weeks ago and, you know, you were your little tag and where you're from and I had a few people approach to, you know, just inquire about our search and how it was going. So, that was good and, um, I have a leadership group that I go to and all of the folks in that group knew quite a while who I talked about at the group and asked them to spread the word. So, you know, and I'm feeling like the, most people were looking actively, looked at the, or has, in the, at leadership and so, you know, there, I think we, we missed anybody as somebody who wasn't really thinking about coming, but potentially would have seen and say, oh, we, that might be a good fit for me. But I, you know, people who are out there are saying that they, that they've heard of it.
So, I, could I just, I guess my point, and we talked about this too, but we never voted to do a national search. That wasn't the vote we took. We picked a firm that's not from Massachusetts, but we didn't vote to do a national search. So, that was never my expectation. I did make it very clear to the group that that was not my intent. Now, maybe everybody else had a different intent, but, um, and secondarily, I don't think it's a matter where the public should be alarmed. I think we have forty-seven people that have applied and maybe, I don't know how many from Massachusetts, but it looked, last time it looked about nine maybe. My point is that we had an email that went out a week before the deadline. Now, I thought we might want to reconsider the deadline because of that, because the email to assistant superintendents and superintendents and all the different administrators, that's really the way people communicate today. So, you know, it is what it is. It's not going to change now, but that was my concern.
And, and I'll just share as well, I, I know you're saying you're not placing blame. From the day that we approved the flyer, I was in contact with via email, via phone call and have been continu-, continuously since with Ray and Associates and with Tom and Sue. You know, as control of when associations send out emails, we have no control over that. So, I, I just want that made clear is that there is, you know, there are certain issues that are out of our hands by using a search committee. You know, and for when, when an agency who we request to put out an email puts it out, we don't have control over that. But it's not that that was ever lacking, that was done within the week of the ads, all other ads being placed. Now, the fact that they were published late is not something that we have control over. But we have gotten correspondence from people asking about extending the search and, and whatnot and I, I think that came from our last meeting's discussions and I don't want people to think that, you know, we're not extending it, um, and, and not allowing viable candidates to, to apply because of concerns. I, I think Ray and Associates made, both Dr. Rush and Ryan Ray made some very valid points of when we had them on the phone, that, you know, if you extend a search at this point or, or at that point, you know, then candidates who have already applied start questioning what's wrong, why are you extending this, why am I not good enough? What's the problem? So, I think we need to, you know, we hired a consultant. We need to respect their, um, expertise and move forward with them. Not to say that we have to kowtow or, or acquiesce to everything that they say, but again, none of us have run a superintendent search. That's what we're paying them for, so I would, you know, I'm sure that we have very qualified applicants and look forward to the search committee having to narrow them down, um, for us. So, moving on, superintendent's report.
Uh, there's a lot of information on the MCAS in Park, so I took the liberty of trying to summarize it for you. The one thing to note is that at our December fourteenth meeting, I'll come forward with a recommendation on whether or not to take the MCAS at Park and you'll have to vote at that meeting because we've been given the deadline of December eighteenth to submit our, um, determination to the DESA. So, the Board of Education voted to approve the commissioner's recommendation to develop a new hybrid test called the MCAS two. The new test will be modeled on the Park and augmented with new questions as well as MCAS questions. The new test will be administered in two thousand seventeen. The commissioner has nine elements to his recommendation. Number one, the MCAS in Park will be used to develop the new test. Two, spring of two thousand sixteen will be a transitional time for grades three to eight. Districts may choose the MCAS if they took it in two thousand fifteen or the Park. It is recommended that districts that took the MCAS move to the Park so they'll become familiar with the new test and format. The next generation of the MCAS test will be based upon the Park test and augmented by the MCAS. Three, the commissioner will convene advisory committees to look at the content of the test, length of the test, scheduling of the test, special education factors, requirement for high school and the implementation of a history social studies test. I'm sorry John's not here to hear that. No data has been given for the implementation of a history test yet. Four, review panels will be established to look at the frameworks to see if they meet best practices. They will be modified, but will not be started from scratch. Five, the new MCAS two will be a computer-based test with paper options available. Six, in two thousand sixteen, districts taking the Park will be held harmless unless they're a level four school. In two thousand seventeen, everyone will be held accountable. Guidance will be given around teacher evaluation. If Park's score is as poor, but a teacher's performing well, then the teacher will be held harmless. Seven, high school testing will remain with the MCAS for two thousand sixteen and grade ten requirements will remain the same. Park will not be offered at the high school level next year. Eight, work will continue with the Park Consortium. Nine, Massachusetts will get our own RFP so we have more flexibility to lead the consortium should it be needed. We will remain active so that we get multi-state data. The commissioner presented this to the board and the state board added one more component, which I put down as number ten. During the two thousand seventeen administration, the new MCAS two, districts will be held harmless from negative impacts, given it's a new test. So, the next steps, all districts should respond by December eighteenth and let the DES know if the Park or MCAS will be administered. The commissioner recommends going to the Park so that students are prepared in two thousand seventeen to take the electronic version and be more familiar with the types of questions that will be asked. If we do not respond to the state, then Long Meadow will keep with the MCAS as this is the test that we chose to take previously. The, um, my, as for my recommendation, the administrative team and I will meet and then make a recommendation to you, the school committee, at our December fourteenth meeting on whether to use the Park or MCAS. The school committee will need to vote that night in order to meet the commission- or MCAS. The school committee will need to vote that night in order to meet the commissioner's deadline of December eighteenth, 2015. Next, we have formalized our partnership with Japan with our friends in Takikawa. On Friday, November thirteenth, Japanese school officials and Long Meadow school officials signed a sister school partnership where we committed to remain lifelong partners. Our friendship has blossomed over the past ten years, where students and staff from Long Meadow High School in Takikawa, Japan have exchanged visitors. We benefit from this wonderful cultural exchange, where we learn about the Japanese culture and life in a different part of the world. Many friendships have developed due to this valuable exchange, and this official partnership seals our bond to one another. Next, Dr. Ruth Potte presented to over eighty parents at Long Meadow High School. People have reported high marks for her informative presentation on brain development after the use of drugs and alcohol. Shelley Warren is preparing a video of the presentation that will be posted on our website. Many thanks to Dr. Potte for her work in preventing the spread of drug and alcohol abuse. As Michael mentioned earlier, the Musi Auditorium is going to be dedicated tomorrow evening. Michael is a former legend and music teacher in Long Meadow. The naming committee voted earlier this year to bestow this honor upon Mr. Musi for his years of service, dedication to the town, and excellence in the music program. Please join us at seven PM in the auditorium to celebrate this recognition of an outstanding educator. Next, the middle school BYOD. The middle school principals, Taylor, Ryan, Nicole Allen, and I sent out documents to family announcing the BYOD. Bring your own device at the middle schools. This program will be rolled out in January 2016. A special thank you to the fire department and our maintenance department, DPW. There was a gas leak, as you know, at Williams Middle School, and the chief was there throughout the night with Columbia Gas to make sure that Williams Middle School was safe and ready to open the next day. We are fortunate to work with such a dedicated fire department. Congratulations to our soccer team, girls volleyball, field hockey, for outstanding seasons. And finally, I attended two student events this week. The senior class play was outstanding. Dorothy, I think, could have been on Broadway, she was so talented. I think all of the actors and actresses did an outstanding job. It was a great performance, and I really enjoyed it. And then lastly, I visited the STEAM Museum over at Blueberry today. It was a great activity for science, technology, engineering, arts, and math in the gym. I know, Kim, that you had brought the program. To Marie and the PTO funded it, but the students were fully engaged in exploring all kinds of things, from robotics to trying to power a bike that was hooked up electrically. So, it was a great day. And that's it.
My daughter came home and took everything off her Christmas list and said, I just want that robot, Mom.
Oh, your robot?
The, it was the robot that we've talked about for quite a few years.
I saw, I mean, I've seen it here, but I saw it at the MASC conference, and I looked at it, and I was like, I mean, it doesn't, its eyes don't move.
They change colors with his mood, though.
But it was, I was like, why did, I was like, what really attracted Kim to this? Because it's just staring at you.
Makes you buy me, buy me.
You should have seen these kids today, doing tai chi with the guy, with the little robot. They were, it was unbelievable. And three second-grade classrooms, all in the room, with the robot right on the desk in front of them, and every single one of them is quiet for the entire five minutes that he's talking. Like that-
That's amazing, right there.
You know, sixty second graders, quiet. It was amazing to watch. It was really cool. They were really-
A couple of robots.
They were really into him, and it was a fun experience.
I'll ask Nick to pursue that. I know that Kevin had been looking into it, but I think we lost that in the transition. Getting the robot for after-school to share among the schools, because the kids do love it, and it really is amazing and teaches programming.
Yeah, I mean, the guy was wonderful. He taught, he told all of them to go out and grab a Java book.
And, this is really great. Any other question for Marie on her report?
All right. So, finance sub, Liz?
Yes, one second. Okay. Some highlights. We talked about the preschool playground, and we decided that we are going to request funds for that through the CPA capital venue, and then if not funded, then we will find other, find other funding sources for that, which would be going to Wolf Swamp. And right now, it's safe for the kids to use, and it's monitored by the teacher, so everything's safe and, safe and sound. Let's see, we also discussed the budget for next year, and how we want to proceed, and we looked at current fees, and we talked about other fees like kindergarten, parking, preschool, so we're going to continue on those discussions. And, what's-
What's that?
We talked a little bit about the negative balance. We got nothing on the lunch-
Well, yeah, yes.
Not that we need to call anyone else, but, you know-
Right.
It'd be nice if parents could pay their balances.
Yes. For the school lunch fund, we have some families who have not paid their lunch balances, and we really like parents to be aware that there are balances, and we appreciate them paying off in a timely manner before graduation.
Is it four-year?
I'm just joking about the graduation part.
It's at elementary level?
Yeah.
Yes?
Not for tonight's meeting, but at some point, I would think the committee should be giving some type of direction to the finance subcommittee about what we think about kindergarten and how it should be included in the budget or not, and free cash, and all those type of things. Just to give you some idea of what the majority of the committee's thinking, because so far, I don't think we've had that conversation.
Right. I think we have a conversation, don't we?
I thought that when we did the presentation, you had asked that Tom do budgets both ways with numbers. Did I miss something?
I know you were not asking to do two budgets, but-
But that was just me, I mean, I don't, you may not agree with me, so that's-
I agree with you.
Right.
It's not so much two budgets, I guess it's where would we come up with some of the money? And the other thing that came to me in that other presentation is a hundred, that you did with the board, is we have a hundred thousand, that's essentially a one-time cost, because we get a hundred thousand from the state after the first year.
Dependent on the chapter seventy-
But we should get something around that number.
Right.
I mean, unless something dramatically changes. So, one thing we could do is present to the town that we think free cash should be appropriate for that hundred thousand, because it's essentially a one-time cost. So, those are the type of things that, I don't know when we do that, but-
We actually discussed that a little bit at our finance sub-meeting. We've discussed, because you had mentioned that, kind of, I remember you mentioning that at the SLIF board meeting, and so I brought it up at our formal meeting.
So, if we're on all the same page, we don't need to do that. I just, just because I said something doesn't mean you all agree, or we want to do that, or, you know, I didn't know.
I think what we generally do is, because we have a consensus about the kindergarten, is that we ask Tom to create two budgets, and then we also need the administration to come with us and tell us their list of wants and needs, and to include that in the budget as well, and then, you know, see where cuts can be made, and then, you know, if not, if, if, if funding, fully funding kindergarten is not going to happen for whatever reason, then can we lower the fee, you know, how much can we lower it? So, Tom's going to work on that.
Okay.
Tom loves to work on that.
Yeah.
He's thrilled, but-
You don't need to see your family till after, but you're right. And then we have some budget transfers. Would you like to go over that now? Good time?
Okay.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the budget revisions as outlined in the document titled FY sixteen, Grants and Special Revenues, Revision Number Two, dated November nineteenth, 2015.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
So, just to give a short explanation, the kindergarten transfer is to support the third section of full day that was added at Wolf Swamp, so we added a kindergarten assistant. So, this is to recognize the portion, or half of her salary, that is being paid from the revenue that is being collected from the kindergarten tuition. So, that is, that transfer. The other transfer on the grant and special revenue is in regards to the pupil transportation. So, when we used to provide transportation to Greenwood and Montessori and the JCC, they would pay us for that service. We would recognize that in this revolving account to receive the funds and then make the payments to the vendor. Since we are no longer providing those services, we won't be receiving this revenue, and we won't be incurring the expense. So, therefore, this line does not have to exist in the budget. So, I'm just trying to get the lines caught up to what's really happening for work on the FY seventeen budget, which I think I mentioned in our last meeting also.
Any questions about that? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Okay.
And secondly, I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the budget transfers as outlined in the document titled FY sixteen, General Fund Budget Transfer Number Two, dated November nineteenth, 2015.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
So, these are general fund transfers, similar to the ones you approved at our last meeting. The first four or five are related to legal settlements and the pupil services budget. Again, trying to align appropriated funds to anticipated expenditures, so that in the FY seventeen budget, the amounts hopefully will correspond a little better to what the expenditures or what our requests will be. In the assistant lines, there's approximately three transfers to move money to where staffing actually is assigned, instead of where we appropriated the funds back when we did the budget development. And then the last two are just to cover some, cover supplies from within the high school in their discretionary lines.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Any legislative updates, Michael?
Well, the House and the Senate are both in recess until, your guess is as good as mine, but they ended the legislative session last week. They got a lot of stuff done on veterans, but they left some stuff on the table, including solar net metering, transgender accommodations, things like that. There's, you know, nothing, nothing on education that has come up in front of the two bodies yet. There's still a lot of stuff in committee. All those bills need to be heard or reported out by committee by March, so we might see some movement on some of the education-related bills, including S two sixty-eight, S two fifty-three, which are the two senate-related bills on, or senate bills on, that are kindergarten, pre-K related. But, you know, there's like six thousand bills, so.
All right. LPD, see?
We had our meeting one, last Wednesday night. We had an audit that went well, and also their precision machine shop is all ready to be used, so.
Great, good stuff. Great. Policy sub, I know we have to reschedule, we're going to have to reschedule our meeting.
Yep. We were supposed to meet tonight. That got preempted by an executive session, so I'll be getting with the two, Russell and you, to pick a new date. Just for everybody at home, we're in the process of doing policy section reviews. We're in the middle of policy section B. I know that we received some correspondence asking us to review sections in policy section J. I, you know, obviously, we can, we can review them now, or we can, you know, leave them in J and do them when we get to J sometime next month or two. Either way, I know we're going to review them, so it's just-
Right.
-up to, I'll leave it to you to let me know if you want me to put them on the agenda sooner rather than later.
All right, so we'll get on that. Operations sub?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking a long way. I jumped ahead to middle school.
Okay, we met last week as well, and we discussed our MOU that we would like to finalize with the DPW. We discussed the responsibilities and schedules, and also a way for the school community to voice any issues that they see at schools. They let us know that their preferred method of communication, and, not just because they don't want to talk to anybody, but is to use the, an app, it's called YourGov app, and this helps them, because they get to log in the information that, that you send to them, and it sends the location, and that way they can track their performance data and make sure that things get done. And, so that was something that we talked about and needs to be added. And, but, you know, if it's an emergency, you can still call the DPW.
I should clarify that, it's like, if they see anything that's related to the, like, grounds, like, it's not-
Right, like-
Like a sprinkler-
A sprinkler head, like spewing forth.
Like some, like an emergency, like, let's, I don't know if this would be a police emergency or DPW, but like a rabid fox is walking into the school. Like, would that be DPW or police? I don't know. But that's something, an emergency, you would call, probably DPW or police, whatever. But, you know, if there's, like, some leaves on the field, you know, that's, that's something that you could log onto YourGov app.
Yeah, like, I've gotten a phone call or a text, or, hey, you know, who's responsible for the grounds of the, this area, and-
Or the grass is looking pretty high.
Or the, the grass is looking pretty high, and so, of cour-, you know, I'm usually in the middle of going to a meeting with Marie, and I say to Marie, hey! And so, she picks up the phone and calls the DPW, and that's really something we're trying to avoid. And so-
Because the phone calls, they-
They get-
They're not as data-driven, I guess, as this app.
So, could I ask that you guys maybe put together a little blurb of what the app is, and when to use it, and how, so we could put it on our website, so that people can find it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. The other thing also that got discussed is that Steve and Crane is going to write us a monthly report to be read out at our meeting, so if there's any concerns about, not concerns, any updates on something that's going on at the school, or like a road closure or something that has directly to do with the school, not like the town, but the school, and that it's probably not emergency enough to be on a messenger. So, he was nice enough to let us know about that. Anyway.
Kim said quarterly.
Oh, is it quarterly?
Yeah, I have it in my notes, and it's quarterly.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, I don't want to-
Sorry, Stephen. Quarterly.
Liz would like to see monthly, not quarterly, you know.
So, anyway, I, last night, I, like, typed up sort of an MOU, so I'm going to work on that with Stephen, since he has, like, the planning, city planning experience. And also, doing, going through this process, it made me realize that DPW is actually a big asset of ours, because when looking at all the things that they do for our schools, like, they plow our, you know, sidewalks and, and all that stuff, and I just thought it would be nice to give them a shout-out.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we've said before that the town has been supportive of, of us in the past, especially with, with the building. I know we've been supportive of the senior center in the past. I, I think that, you know, I think, while we may not all agree on a site for a DPW, I would think that everyone on the committee recognizes that a new facility is necessary. And I was thinking of putting Stephen on an upcoming agenda, because, you know, we all have access to be able to talk with them and get more details and more information. I know he did a presentation at town meeting that was abbreviated because of time. He told me his original presentation was like thirty-seven slides, but it gave more detail. I know that parents and, and members are concerned about the Wolf Swamp location and the fields and the use there, but there's so much more information behind the scenes that we, that hasn't, not that it's being hidden, but it hasn't been made public or presented publicly, and I know the, the desire for forums is there, and trying to get answers. But I know in talking with him too, that, you know, he, he doesn't want to host a forum where he doesn't have information to give the answers yet, which I don't, I, I can certainly understand that, because I know after running forums and meetings of our own with the public, if you don't have the answers to questions, then that leads to more frustration on the part of the public. So, I was thinking that perhaps having him come and explain in a little more- So I was thinking that perhaps having him come and explain in a little more detail a, about the process to us and, and to parents because with the, the town looking at Wolf Swamp Fields, I do know that that is a concern for parents and perhaps getting some more factual information prior to them getting ready for a forum would be beneficial.
I can, if you're talking about the DPW in the presentation, I can tell you that I had actually sent the select board and the town manager a note because I was concerned after the last select board meeting, when Mark asked for a public forum and Richard was very much in the no category. And so Stephen called me and said that they would post a public forum at one point before town meeting. So, you know, I'm hoping that that does happen. They do. I, I think it's spent six hundred, over six hundred thousand dollars we've appropriated and there's been no real public forum, which if we did that with the middle schools, we would be cut at the knees.
But I, I think, you know, when, when we were having a discussion, you know, when we all went to the select board last year for an SOI, the select board asked us, could, you know, well, do you want one building? Do you want two? What site would it be at? Where would it be? And we're like, we can't give you those answers until we do a feasibility study, but we can't do a feasibility study until you sign off on an SOI. And it kinda came that which comes first, the chicken or the egg mentality. And I think the DPW issue is kind of in the same boat. They know they need a new DPW facility. They're trying to figure out where, but they can't figure out where until they had the funding to do some studies of soil and traffic and, and all the other components and they didn't, at least what I've been explained is they didn't wanna have a forum until they could answer those questions. So I think it's kind of that same loop is everybody wants answers to questions, but we can't get those answers until the studies are done. And then once the studies are done, there could be a forum. So I, I probably messed that all up in the way I explained it, so I apologize, Stephen, if I, I messed that up, but that's why I was thinking having him come and speak more clearly because I, I too questioned the fact of, you know, at town meeting, the sites presented were a point or two off of each other, when in reality, when you look at some of those questions or, or the questions that they used, there's much more of a gaffe. Michelle and then Russ?
Um, I, I guess I would, I think your idea is great, but I would think it might be better for him to do a presentation in the high school or something, not necessarily the seven of us, but, you know, and maybe there, it's not a question and answer type situation, but maybe suggest instead of coming to us, that he, you know, holds it in a bigger room and has his thirty-seven slides or with more information that, that whatever updates they have, it might be more useful for him to spend his time doing it that way.
Russ?
I don't really wanna comment on DPW in particular just because that's, you know, I think privately I might because as a citizen, but as a school committee member, I'm not really, it's their purview, not mine. But if he wants to come, I, I kind of could see the value in that if we, I, I think when Michelle gets to the middle school subcommittee update, there's gonna be some discussion about this, but if we could tie it to a discussion more globally about DPW, middle school, you know, we have, I would love to talk to the town more about that and I think Stephen would be a good person to start that conversation with.
I would like to see some sort of discussion as well, s- how to work on a DPW, a senior center and a middle school kind of together and with, because right now it feels like there's been priority given to one, just as an out, someone kind of looking the way at, at a, at a different angle, but it, it, it just feels like it's been a, they've done a lot of work on this DPW that no one knew about. And so they, they really wanna, they're really trying to move forward and, and I'm not, not, I'm not, not supporting a DPW. I've been down there, I see what we need and, and I a hundred percent know that we need them for our fields, we need them for the parking lots and, I mean, everything around here. I mean, that app that we were talking about earlier, I'm telling you, they launched it a year ago. You take a picture of a pothole and it's fixed within two days in your neighborhood. I mean, it is unbelievable. So the things that they do are, but I would just like personally see a little bit more public input and kind of work collaboration maybe? Because we know, we've, they've known we need a new middle school for years. We've known we need a new DPW for years. We know we need a new, and something done with the senior center. I just would like to see some sort of...
Collaboration.
Collaboration, I think.
Okay, I will take that back.
I don't know, does that not sound like...
Um, you know, make that suggestion from the committee. I, I think it's just more a matter of, you know, that we, we're acknowledging, and I think you said it best, is, yeah, they've done a lot of behind-the-scenes work and you recognize that a DPW, that they need a new facility, it's just a matter of what's being communicated. And I, I don't think any of us would disagree that a new DPW facility is, is most definitely needed. So I will definitely get back with Stephen and talk about how we can try to work out something of how we can tie this more globally and, and make it more of a collaborative effort. Anything else from operations?
No, that's it.
Okay, so now Michelle from Middle School Working Group.
Okay, um, we met, first we had a meeting on the thirteenth and Bobby Barquette and Peter Greenberg came to share their experience with the, and involvement with the LHS project. They also helped us look through, you know, the financial report and, and our debt exclusion schedule and see how it is now as compared to how it was when the LHS project began. We also talked about, you know, what went on leading up to the SOI and, and then the length of that process. We then talked about, you know, the town's current projects. We said it just now, the DPW, the senior center and of course the middle schools and how all of these would affect each other and the debt schedule and the timing of a new middle school. We discussed this at length and think that the best course of action would be to develop a town-wide task force or try to develop a task force instead of just looking at just the middle schools, try to look at all of the projects and all the buildings together collaboratively and look at how combining our efforts and ideas could help create a better solution. The middle school, you know, our subcommittee reached consensus that we should come up with a more detailed outline and plan before we proceed with the public forum. And also decided that because of the submission deadline for the SOI, which is mid-January, and we had trouble with the forum date that we were going to have, the new projects on the table, we reached consensus to recommend to the school committee, and this was just the three of us recommending that we not file an SOI for Williams and Glenbrook in January. Instead, we'd like to take a step back, create a timeline that would kind of incorporate the needs of the middle schools and then, you know, what needs to be looked at now and what can, you know, happen in the future. Not that we don't want to submit an SOI, we just didn't feel like it was, the timing was, we were, we're recommending that the timing is just not great. So.
Any questions or concerns or comments?
But again, I'll just say that, you know, this was the three of us discussing it and, and we very much wanna hear from you guys about how you feel about that.
I agree. The only thing I would say is that the collaboration between everybody, and I wish that that could happen, but I feel like everybody's out for their own needs and wants and so I don't know how that collaboration's gonna happen, you know?
Are you, yeah, did you say, did you, did you just mention two groups? So like one would be a, a town-wide task force for all three major projects that need to go in and then one would be a middle school group?
So we could, we could, depending on the interest level from, you know, and we would contact Stephen Crane and Mr. Foster and, and try to look at, at forming a committee that could kind of be a town-wide task force for these projects, but then maybe we could sub, you know, categorize and we would, you know, if the three of us were on it, we would focus on the middle schools, but we would, even if, and then if that didn't happen, we would just kind of still take a step back with the middle schools and try to get some more community representation on that and possibly, you know, DPW facility, people within the town that could help us examine the buildings with a little bit more detail and get some more community, people that, you know, no construction, no facilities management, that sort of thing, just ask for some more help in, in looking at. Am I explaining that well?
Yeah, I think the only, when, I thought at the end of the meeting, didn't we kind of determine that we try to, in some aspects it'd be town-wide, but it would also, it would mainly focus on middle schools? So we'd create this task force, ask Stephen and, you know, a board member probably and other members of the community to be, to be on it. It necessarily involves DPW, senior center, everything else, because as Liz said, you can't just do one project by itself, it's not in the silo. I mean, if you look at all the information that Mr. Barquette and Mr. Greenberg showed us, it is very clear that if we're gonna do anything, we have to look at all three, figure out how we lay them out, when they're gonna happen. And at some point, there may be disagreement about which one goes first and all that, but we still should be working out the same information with some type of plan. Now, their plan might be DPW first and then senior center, then middle schools, and maybe our plan isn't exactly that. But we have to be working from common assumptions and I don't think we're doing that right now as a town. Can, can we? I don't know, but I think we should at least try to do that.
And the, and the other piece to this is if, you know, knowing that obviously we won't have any new building, no matter what, if we don't file for the SOI this year, it's gonna be at least probably six years or so, Marie, before we could, in the best-case scenario, have a new, so then we have to also take a step back and look at what should be addressed for the next, you know, five years, because there are definitely issues that we have been leaving on the plate because we didn't know it was happening and I think there are things that we just can't keep tabling. So that was the other piece to this. It's not, it's not, let's put this aside and, and leave it, it's, let's reorganize and create a roadmap and, and a plan, a detailed plan.
Michael, did you have anything?
Well, I think it's, it's, you know, it, I think it's the right decision and it's the right recommendation to make, especially given the timing and especially given the fact that I'm sure what Bobby and Peter told you was that you need a lot of, you know, they told you exactly what type of community feedback you need and how we didn't do enough of that last year, because they've, obviously, I think, shared those comments with, with the majority of us. I think, you know, what I was going to say, Michelle, you just addressed, which is that, you know, the longer we put these things off, the more likely it is that we have to continue to address the capital needs of, of those, of those buildings. And, you know, one of the challenges that we continue to address and, you know, I know when we go to the Capital Planning Committee soon, you know, we're gonna run into this issue where they don't know what to fund and they may not wanna fund certain things because we can't tell them what the future of the building looks like. The realistic, the real, the reality is that even with a roadmap, we still can't tell them what the future of the building looks like because there's a whole process in place that, you know, the state's put before us that we can't, I mean, we're not, we don't have crystal ball, but I think determining what a roadmap looks like and determining what those projects are, are important steps and, you know, and I think that that's a really great approach for the Middle School Working Group to take. You know, getting buy-in from the town is, is important too, and so I really do appreciate that approach as well. So, you know, I, I guess what I would love to kind of get a, not get a better idea, but uh, you know, I would love to kind of know like what the timeline for that sort of thing looks like, which I know you're not prepared to answer right now and that's totally fine. But, you know, in the next couple of meetings, just so we kind of have a realistic idea of what, you know, what the process is gonna look like and, you know, when we, what the milestones for that roadmap are and, so.
And I, and I did a rough draft that, you know, kind of looks at it for a year period and we can begin by working at that. It would, if we wanted to, you know, we could be ready in a year with a lot more information. But again, you know, one thing that, that Bobby mentioned that we now really have to consider is when they were beginning the work on the LHS project, there was like zero debt, you know? Or very little debt and now we have to consider what we're gonna have now and how that comes into play. So that, even that one-year timeline might get us ready, but it doesn't mean that, you know, we can do what we wanna do, but...
Right. I mean, and I think that's, that's like the crystal ball thing. It's like, we don't know, I mean, we could be great and submit it next year and everybody agrees with us and MSBA still says, "Sorry." Uh, or we can be great and get it done and the MSBA says, "We'd love to do this," and town meeting says, "No." So there's a lot of facets to how this thing gets accomplished, but, you know, I think the most important thing for the school committee to do, not just the Middle School Working Group, but the school committee, is to continue to talk about the needs that these buildings have. You know, and John, although he's not here, would be the first person to say that he doesn't believe that people know that we have middle schools. And I think that that's true in a lot of ways, no offense Cathy, as a middle school teacher, because people only know about them when their kids are there. You know, you spend six years in an elementary school, among that, and you spend four years in the high school, you spend three years in middle school. It's a very sort of transient time for your children. So you kinda say, "Well, my kid can deal with this." But the truth is that the teachers have a quality of life that, you know, they're not enjoying the same way that teachers in other buildings are and the kids don't have the same access to the type of resources because the buildings can't support them. And, you know, for all the other variety of reasons that these buildings are no longer sufficient for us, the ADA issues, the safety issues, you know, the infrastructure issues, it's, you know, it is the time for us to continue to have this conversation. And so, you know, I think that in addition to planning this way, like we're doing, and I think it's the appropriate plan, I think it's kind of incumbent upon all of us to go out and continue to talk about the fact that this is a need and to really educate people as to why that's a need. And it's never gonna be cheaper and it's never not gonna be, you know, important, so we have to kind of just talk about it on its face, which is, it's an important thing for this community and this, and this committee and really for, for our children and for the future economic viability and development of this community. So, I'm done talking now.
And some other things that we talked about doing in, in the short term was tours, which I know that we did for the start of school, but they weren't with the same, you know, microscope as these would be. So we can certainly all attend them, whoever's available, we can try to schedule it so, you know, and then go in with, you know, a facilities manager and that sort of thing, Janet or have, have people there to talk to us about the problems specifically that we need to address.
Maybe even a building inspector.
Right.
I mean, right now, the concern is, if just some projects go out by themselves, the inclination of the town, that town meeting is to vote no.
Right.
I mean, that's my inclination, when I, if I saw all of them go separately with no plan, I might vote no just because there's no plan that I can see, you know, an endgame to. But I think they're all worthy projects, it's just, you know, trying to coordinate them so that we're all supporting all the projects, hopefully.
Well, and to that, and to that point, if I can just add one more thing, then I will stop talking. You know, I think we've, I mean, we have, I mean, I mean Janet, myself, Liz, Kim, I mean, we, and, I mean, Michelle to even to a degree before this year, like, we've asked the select board, where do we fit in? Show us a plan, tell us, you know, what, what is, you know, what's the plan here? Because I think, like we said, like, we obviously could get behind a new DPW facility excluding the, you know, the conversation about the location of it. You know, we can get behind a senior center and we have gotten behind a senior center. You know, we, school committee is, every single time one of these funding, you know, items have come to town meeting, up at town meeting, have voted in support of it. You know, and maybe we haven't always been vocal supporters, but we've never, I mean, as a whole and as a majority, never voted against these things, you know? And unfortunately, our counterparts on the select board can't say the same thing. But I think that, you know, it's important for us to have a conversation or to at least get an answer from them, because we've tried to have a conversation about, you guys have a senior center and you guys have a DPW building and you have roads and bridges, or not bridges, but roads and sewers that need replacements. We got two aging buildings that were built almost as long ago as the DPW building. Tell us, you know, tell us where this fits in because we have six hundred kids or seven hundred kids a year that flow through there, not to mention the staff, I mean, not to mention all their parents and it's, you know, always, so, good luck.
When, when was that, what year are the middle schools built?
Fifty-three and sixty-two.
Yeah, fifty-six and sixty-seven.
Fifty-six and sixty-three, something like that.
Fifty's and sixty's. Fifty's and sixty's? No, I'm just, yes, there, there... Because there was an argument that has gotten up at town meeting.
Yes. But so I, I agree, you know, with, with everything that's been said. I think, you know, that we, we move forward, that, that the middle school group keeps working and not just dissolve, you know, of, of coming up with a more concrete plan, of, of reaching out and trying to, to collaborate.
And I think we can do that when Stephen comes. I mean, that's a perfect opportunity. I think the board will do it. I think they'll work with us if we, if three of them will.
To address a, a plan for all three, doesn't it have to have some with the select board?
One would think.
Well, I mean, just to be clear, the way I look at this is, you know, we don't control in any way their buildings, so if they decide to go forward with a different plan than us, I think it's more about, let's just get together and talk as much as we can about the information, and be working from the same information, and then maybe we disagree, but at least we're having dialogue, more dialogue.
And at least we're, you're, like you had said before, is you're working off of the same basic information.
Yeah.
You know, that it's not one group going out and trying to recreate the wheel, you know, with, with finding different information, so, excuse me, I'm definitely in, in support of that, of, you know, let's continue to collaborate, you know, continue to, for you guys to continue to meet, work on those timelines, and, and keep us, you know, in the loop of, of everything. Because I know before, when it had, when we decided not to move forth, you know, the, the group just kind of died and, and went off into the sunset, and, and we resurrected it a while ago, so I, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, uh, you wanna keep on moving like that, so.
Yes, absolutely, it's just reorganizing and, and getting some more, yes.
Regrouping, and, absolutely.
And I will just make one more point, I didn't know this, but, um, the buildings were sixty-seven was Glenbrook and Williams was fifty-nine, but they actually filed two SOIs at the same time as the original SOI for the high school, did you know that, Michael? And, and then.
Because they wanted to do it as a group project.
Right, but then the state went into moratorium or something, so then when they came back in, they said you can only go forward with one, so they chose the high school because that was it. So it's, it's been something that's been, you know, on the table for a long time, but,
Yeah, oh, and, and it's also just kind of worth adding that, uh, the select board two thousand eleven voted to approve SOIs on both Williams and Glenbrook, the same SOIs that we basically gave them last year that they voted against.
No, no, we gave them much better ones last year.
Essentially containing similar information.
Different select board.
Different select board, but yes, I think.
Not that different.
I think three SOIs have been filed in the past on each school, going back and looking at the history, so it's not something that, yeah.
Oh, four, yeah, something like that, oh, four or five.
Yeah, so it's not something, but I, I think the approach, the, the way you wanna go about it is, is something I can certainly get behind and, and support, so. Enjoy.
Thank you.
Enjoy moving forward. All right, so we also have, um, some action items tonight. The nurses, um, our school nurses would like to unionize, um, and the school committee must vote to first recognize them as a union. Tom, Marie, and I met with Liz and Kathy and some nurse representatives and the LEA rep?
MTA.
To, to start this process. During negotiations, the nurses had requested to become part of Unit A, which is the, the teachers' union, um, and the nurses did have their own union. You said the last contract was ninety-six, Tom?
Ninety-four, I think.
Ninety-four. So what there were, it, it would be starting a, a contract, you know, from, from scratch, but in order to do so, we have to, um, first recognize, that the school committee must recognize them wanting to be a, a bartering unit, their, and then it has to be posted for twenty days before we can begin negotiations with them. So, can I have a motion?
I move that the school committee voluntarily recognize a unit of registered DESE licensed school nurses as a bargaining unit under MGL Chapter one-five-zero-E, subject to the meeting, subject to meeting the requirements of state regulations for voluntary recognition, including the posting requirement with a posting which reads as follows. Pursuant to MGL C one-fifty-E and four-five-six-CMR fourteen-oh-six, the Long Meadow School Committee, Committee hereby notifies all persons that it intends to grant exclusive recognition without an election to the Long Meadow Education Association Nurses Unit for the following employees: all full-time nurses with school nurse license from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DESE, employed by the Long Meadow School Committee, excluding all substitute nurses per diem nurses, nurses without license issued by DESE, one-to-one nurses, and all other employees. This notice shall be posted for a period of at least twenty days.
So that's a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? So by doing this, um, you would be authorizing me to sign the notice of voluntary recognition, which would then be posted for at least twenty days, which then we could begin negotiating with the nurses as their own separate unit.
Now we unit C?
I don't, C? Kathy's saying yes, so it must be true.
That they were before, so they would just slot back in.
It's good.
How do they get out of it? Can't remember. Don't know.
They voted to remove themselves at one point in time, because they were so similar.
Oh, okay, I just didn't know the history.
And regulations were so different then.
Hmm, okay.
All right, so any further discussion? So all those in favor? Okay, so I will sign this, and then it will get posted. All right, another, um, issue that has been brought to my attention, um, are the joint school committee select board appointments, um, in particular to the technology advisory board. The select board had interviewed a candidate who applied for the technology advisory board, and then realized that, once again, that is a joint appointment, um, so they are still holding on that, so we either have to schedule a joint meeting with the select board to interview the candidate, and then wait the two-week period, and then reconvene to vote to either approve, um, to accept or reject the candidate for the appointment. The select board has offered the suggestion and compromise that perhaps for, because it is so difficult to get us, both of our groups together for two consecutive meetings in order to do so, is would we be interested in alternating, um, appointments of, if there was a vacancy on a joint committee one time, they would interview and appoint a candidate, the next time there was an opening, the school committee would interview and appoint the candidate? Or are we willing to change, um, who makes the appointments to these committees and not have them be joint? So it was asked that I bring that forth for discussion. Right now, there is a vacancy on the technology advisory board, and there is a candidate who has been interviewed by the select board. So we either need to, well, we either need to meet with them.
Right.
And we need to schedule two joint meetings.
Right. So, I don't think that they're select, has, have they talked to their council about their suggestion of?
I do not know.
Because under the charter and the administrative code adopted by the school committee and select board with the consolidation of the IT department, there, it requires a joint appointment and a joint interview, so they're gonna have to re-interview that person for the second time, because I believe we spoke to them last year about the same issue.
Yes, we did.
Um, I personally, considering that we maintain the IT department within the budget of the school department, that we pay the staff of the IT department out of our budget, and that we buy the supplies and materials for this, for general government out of our budget, uh, I do not necessarily want to cede the authority of appointing to the technology advisory committee, which advises our IT director, employed by the Long Meadow Public Schools, to the select board, who have, on very rare occasions, acted in the best interest of the Long Meadow School community, so I have no problem.
So in that line, you're willing to attend two joint meetings?
Right, and it's actually only seven days from the time of the interview, and I think that we could invite them to the beginning of one of our meetings for an interview or an appointment, and they can invite us to one of the beginnings of, beginning one of their meetings.
Is it seven business days or seven calendar days?
I believe it's just seven business days, but, I mean.
Well, seven business days is more than a, a week.
So we, or we can, we can figure it out.
Right.
I mean, you know, we can get this done quickly, we've appointed the entire board in the past, we've made appointments to school committees in the past, Michelle knows, so, you know.
Right, no, and, and I understand, and we had to have the special meetings last year for, uh, the joint appointment as well for one of the, the boards.
So I, I personally do not want to miss the opportunity to appoint someone to the board. Nope.
Okay.
That would be like us appointing people to the town manager's advisory board.
Okay. Ross, or Michelle, or Kim?
I, I think we can make a joint meeting work, I don't think that that's.
I could.
It shouldn't be that difficult.
Well, I like, my, oops, sorry.
No, you raise your hand.
Sorry, I like Michael's idea of the beginning of each of our meetings, because it's impossible to, like, find a meeting date that everybody can do in the middle of the week or whatever, but it seems like, you know, we all know we're here on Monday nights at seven o'clock every other week, and then vice versa, so.
And it's like twenty minutes.
And we do have remote participation if we need to, I know we have to be at quorum, but.
They, they have not.
Oh, they wouldn't.
Have adopted remote participation, nor do they plan to, so for a joint committee, then it wouldn't be possible.
Do you have to have a certain number of days, like, can it be three weeks in between?
Yeah.
So, I mean.
There's a minimum, I think.
Yeah, it has to be a minimum of seven.
So if it can't work out that it's the following Monday, and it can be the following, their following, like, you know?
Right. Right. Russ?
I agree with Michael, I think if we could tie it to the six-thirty time.
Yeah.
But I do think that we could do it together.
Or just the beginning of the seven o'clock meetings, at the first part of the.
The first item on the agenda.
I mean, we were pretty much all at the last select board meeting in support of the, actually, Janet's, um.
Presentation on kindergarten.
Presentation on kindergarten, so, I mean, we proved that we can get.
Again, like, one interview, I mean, it might, it might take a half hour at the most.
Is this the only board that we really have that situation, besides when we have a vacancy on our own board?
And it was, I mean, the history of it is that it was, I mean, essentially kind of a carrot for the select board to agree to consult, to move the IT department, consolidate it into the schools, with, I mean, obviously, the cost savings was another part of that, and I don't know, I looked at Tom, but, I mean, we wanted their buy-in and let them know that, you know, IT's an integral part of their functions as business as well, so we tried to get them on board, but it's important to remember, history being history, that Bobby Barquette and Rob Baseltine drove this, uh, through the select board, and they were the last, I think, some of the last people over there to, uh, be former school committee members, so.
Okay, Liz, you have something?
Um, I was just gonna say, um, that they've already interviewed this person, so.
They will need to re-interview with us present, because we will need to participate in the interview.
Well, well, right, but surely they've already asked all the questions, why can't they just be here when we all ask all the questions, so it'll be a shorter meeting? I mean, a shorter time.
Right.
There won't be fourteen people asking questions, or twelve or whatever, right?
Watch their video.
Yeah, and watch their video, see what they asked, or maybe they can submit their questions to us, so we don't ask it again, and then be like, ugh.
I mean, I guess a reasonable question off of that one to ask is, do we need to conduct a joint meeting for the interview portion, or can we do two separate interviews and then just have a joint meeting for the appointment? I mean.
I think the way it's worded, by what you were saying, is it's gotta be a joint interview and appointment.
I don't think so, I think the administrative code just says that it's jointly appointed.
I don't think it speaks to the interview process.
So, I mean, we potentially, potentially we could just.
I think in the past, it was done to save the candidates from having to attend two different meetings with two different groups for the interview.
Just, you know, for the second year in a row, they've interviewed, met people for this committee without coming to us.
So, would this committee feel comfortable if I requested that we interview the candidate who they've already interviewed, that we interview them at our meeting, and then we would have a joint meeting for an appointment?
Sure.
Yes.
We should get their questions.
Yeah.
Because we may just use their questions or add some to it, potentially.
Again, I just also ask that we just kind of clarify with council to make sure that that's on the up and up.
To do the two separate interviews?
Yeah. I don't wanna waste any money, but I just wanna make sure that we don't do something improperly.
Will do. All right. So, moving on to the warrants. Okay.
Do we have a couple, let's see which ones? This is the one you did, right?
I'm sorry.
So we don't, I'm talking to Michael, sorry.
I just did that one, I'll give him a minute.
So that's, we, I can do this one, okay. Uh, let's see, I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number three-oh-five-nine of the, oh, sorry, Gen, General Fund FY sixteen, fund dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of four hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents.
So do we have a second?
Yep.
Oh, you seconded?
Yep.
All right, Russ, this is, um, here's, so all those in favor? Opposed? Abstain?
Okay, I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number three-zero-five-eight of the General Fund FY sixteen, dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
This is the one I'm on?
No, you can, you can throw that one.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I think.
Okay, all those in favor?
Wait, that, which one?
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's, yeah, your reimbursement, you can still move it, you just shouldn't vote for it.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, so all those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? So you probably shouldn't sign it either.
Hmm, Liz signed it.
I erased it.
That was the official erasing, Tom, okay?
Uh, lastly, I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number twenty-two-hundred of the school lunch FY sixteen fund, dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, sixty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? All right, I have minutes, Kim?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the October thirteenth, two thousand fifteen school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
I move that the school committee approve the meeting minutes to the November nineteenth, two thousand fifteen school committee meeting as presented.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? All right, and we will be adjourning into executive session, so may I have a motion, please?
Uh, I move that we reconvene executive session for, uh, well, I think we reconvene executive session for purposes of, uh, discussing discipline of an individual who, uh.
You don't have to reconvene in open session, do we? To not reconvene in open session. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
So we need a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 All right, so thank you very much, we will be back here, when will we be back here? December fourteenth.